Okay, fine, great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Township of Edison Zoning Board of Adjustment Regular Meeting is now in session. May I have everyone's attention, please? The meeting is beginning. Thank you. Adequate notice, there are procedures we have to follow. Adequate notice of this meeting, as required by the Open Public Meetings Act of 1975, has been provided by the annual notice published in the Home News and Tribune on January 20, 2022, and has been posted in the main lobby of the municipal complex on January 5, 2022. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please, Cassandra.
Mr. Aya?
Here.
Ms. Shaw?
Here.
Mr. Bignell?
Here.
Mr. Carley is here?
Here.
Walking in.
Mr. Patel?
Here.
Mr. O'Gorman?
Here.
Mr. Barone?
Mr. Davay?
Here.
Mr. Sadat Ha?
Here.
Vice Chair Kamba?
Here.
And Chair's Woman Federick?
Here. Thank you, Cassandra. A couple of notices, you'll notice on the agenda. That case Z 33-2022, Sir John Hannah Religious and Charitable Foundation, it has been carried to February 28, 2023. No renotice is required. This is the notice that is carried to February 28. Also, the next case, Z 202022, Shavey Developers LLC, that matter has been carried to February 21, 2023, with no renotice required. This is your notice of that meeting. And also, the third on the list, excuse me, case Z 242022, Old Post Road Realty LLC, that has been carried to January 24, 2023. No renotice is required. This is your notice. We have a little bit of housekeeping. The board has received in front of them all of the meeting dates for 2023. I would like to have a motion approving the dates, please.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, they're carried. One other thing before we get started. I've been reading a summary prior to the meeting so that the public will be informed as they watch the meetings or in here in person. I would like everyone to please listen carefully. What I'm saying in this summary this evening will be in effect, okay? Because there have been so many misconceptions as to this board, that is how it operates, including what it may consider and may not consider, and its procedures and hearings. We are all volunteers and do not get paid. We are appointed by council. We all have to attend a state training course, and we have our own in-house session when it is deemed necessary and appropriate. As I have said at prior meetings, the municipal land use law is the legal bible by which this board operates, along with its own bylaws. This board differs greatly from the planning board. This board is quasi-judicial. That is, it is like a court, and its members like judges. And its impartiality rules and necessity to address matters are in accordance with laws that are the same statewide, not only in Edison. Being impartial means board members are not to discuss the matter with the public until the matter is being heard at a meeting. The board has also, I'm sorry, the board has always and continues to proceed in the following manner. All matters concerning an application are not addressed by this board until the applicant's case is presented at a meeting. The board engages in no discussions and receives the applicant's submissions only days prior to the applicant's scheduled date. When the applicant has presented its testimony and evidence, the public portion is open to residents first within 200 feet of the subject property, then those outside of 200 feet of the subject property. Listen carefully. Each person is given only one chance to speak. All public are sworn in and subject to cross-examination by the applicant, the board, and the board professionals. The public may ask questions to the applicant, their experts, and board professionals. The law allows me as chair to stop anyone from being repetitive in their objections or to attempt to filibuster the board. Such redundancy in conduct prevents the efficient operation by the board. By law, as chair, I am also permitted to stop anyone from speaking if what they are saying is irrelevant to the case and prohibit it from the board's consideration. I am also permitted to restrict all public comment to a timeframe considered reasonable, which I have limited to five minutes in the past, and I have been doing that now presently also. Giving objectors five minutes each to speak has been upheld as a reasonable decision of the New Jersey Superior Court Appellate Division. I am not required to tolerate disruption or disrespect to this board. Once the public portion is closed, that is when I hit the gavel, it is closed and no one from the public will speak again. It will not be reopened under any circumstances unless new testimony is provided in the matter. The applicant then has the right of summation, and the board then votes. This has been the procedure of this board for more than 20-plus years, and its procedure or similar procedures are followed by every zoning board in the state of New Jersey. The board has an obligation to engage in a balancing act and is not required to strictly apply the township ordinances, zone plan, or the master plan, which is permitted by the municipal land use law. This is statewide conduct, again, by all boards of adjustment. As the name of the board suggests, we are a board of adjustment, adjustment being the operative word. Variances are granted when appropriately necessary, following all legal considerations. Having said all of the above, the board has been ceasing all proceedings as we near 10:30, depending upon where we're at. I will say this now because last month's, last week's meeting was a little bit disruptive. This meeting will be conducted with courtesy, respect, and civility, and I will not tolerate interruptions, outbursts, booing, or yelling. So having said that, Ms. Shaw, I would like to address everyone now.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So for the record, in between last meeting and this meeting, many of the board members, to their personal addresses, received envelopes similar to this. The envelopes do not have any return addresses, and the letter that was purported to be in the envelopes does not have a signature of anyone. The board cannot consider any of this information, nor is it appropriate to email or to contact board members when they're in the middle of a hearing. The proper method is for you to appear before this board, and when the public portion is open, that is when you comment under oath, and that you are subject to cross-examination. I have collected all of these. They are going to be disregarded. The board cannot consider them, and it is intolerable that they receive mail of this nature to their personal residences. I don't want to know who did it. I do not want to know how this came about, but this jeopardizes the proceedings before this board. That cannot be tolerated. I am now going to ask the board members, one by one, to indicate if this in any way has biased them in hearing any of the applications. I'm not even going to mention which one this was related to. Starting.
No.
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 No?
No.
And no.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Shaw. Cassandra, first case, please.
Yes, case number Z 162021, Chan, 286 Central Avenue. This is for a vote-only after the information requested by the board is provided. Section 3713, one, use variance only sought to construct a two-story, four-unit townhouse structure and accompanying parking lot.
Good evening, Mr. Wiley.
Good evening. John Wiley appearing behalf of the applicant. The question that was addressed to me at the last hearing, which I could not answer, was with the present single family, how many occupants are there? The answer is two, plus a boyfriend who frequently stays there for whatever that is adds to the discussion. But if you want verification of what I've said, we could swear in the applicant, Jessica Chang, to confirm what I've said.
Ms. Chan, would you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, to help you, God?
Yes.
Can you confirm what I said is accurate?
Yes, that is accurate.
Is the information that you gave me correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wiley. Okay, just to reiterate what we went through last week before we vote, just by looking at this, anyone that was not here. We are voting to either approve or disapprove the settlement, and that you then have to come back if we so approve with site plan for the property, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Having said that, I will go to the board for a motion. Pardon me. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Mr. Davay, you had the question, are you satisfied with the answer?
The only question I have is the current use is a single-family home with two people living in the house. Is that correct?
Correct, plus a boyfriend that stays over frequent.
That's fine, but it is single-family use now, current use.
It is a single-family house.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Okay, sorry. Okay, so having said that, I need a motion at this point to either approve or disapprove my signing the settlement agreement.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Pumba.
I'm trying to make a motion authorizing the chair to sign the settlement agreement.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please, Cassandra.
Mr. O'Gorman? Mr. Barone?
Yes.
Mr. Davay?
Yes, on the motion.
Mr. Patel?
Yes, on the motion.
Mr. Sadat Ha?
Yes, on the motion.
Vice Chair Kamba?
Yes, on the motion.
And Chair's Woman Federick?
Yes, on the motion. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wiley. We appreciate your cooperation with us. Next case, please, Cassandra.
Case number Z 282022, Quick Check Corporation, 425 through 431 Plainfield Avenue, Edison, New Jersey, 08817, section 3720. Applicant is seeking bulk and use variances along with preliminary and final site plan approval to demolish the existing structures and replace with a fuel station and convenience store. This is not a permitted use in the zone. Minimum lot size required is five acres, proposed is two acres. Minimum front yard setback required is 100 feet, proposed is 57.01 feet. Rear yard setback required for an accessory building is 50 feet, proposed is 25 feet. Affected property is located in the PB zone designated as block number 4A, lot numbers 24 and 25 on the Edison Township tax map. All paperwork is in order.
Mr. Chang, just so we are clear, the letter that I referenced earlier, as you are aware, I did advise your office, it was in reference to this application. And you've acknowledged that you've received a copy of it?
Correct.
And you've heard from board members that they are not biased in any way by such letter?
We appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
I apologize. So my name is Jeffrey Chang, law firm at Fox Rothschild out of Princeton. I'm here this evening on behalf of Quick Check Corporation. I apologize, my voice is a little off. I'm still at the tail end of a cold. It is not COVID or anything like that, so I just want to let the board know. Hopefully you'll bear with me. This evening, we're returning to discuss a couple testimony points. Namely, we're going to be going through traffic, architecture, and also planning. As you may recall, on October 25th, we wrapped up operations and the direct for the civil engineering. Before I get to my witnesses, I just want to have John Brower, who's the manager of asset protection, to discuss his conversations with the police department about 24/7 operations, about safety. I know that was something that was discussed, I believe, in one of the review letters from your professionals. So with that being said, if I could have Mr. John Brower sworn in, give some background about, you know, his role at Quick Check, and then testify.
Mr. Brower, would you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, to help you, God?
I do.
And just state your full name for the record.
John Brower.
So, Mr. Brower, can you just give a brief synopsis about your work history with Quick Check, and then take us through, you know, at a high level, the safety procedures that you have in place and your conversations with the police department?
All right. I just celebrated 28 years with the company. I started as a part-timer in the stores, worked my way up through different management positions, and went into the office in the last 10 years in asset protection. I'm responsible for 80 stores within our company, and I met, reaching out to the chief's office, I met with an officer who then directed me to another officer, Officer Winters, who said that he already reviewed the plans, and I said, well, I wasn't really sure what I was trying to get at, and I explained that we like to meet with the different police departments to talk to them about our processes, to see if they have any concerns about our operation. He had none. The only concern he had was with large trucks using the facility. I said, we don't want them either, because they could take out a sign, they'd take up a lot of parking spots. I mentioned that we're already in existing business within the town. Like that one, we are going to seek 24 hours. He says he really wasn't interested. I tried to explain about the different procedures we have regarding cash handling policies, the electronic feeder safes that we use, how we have an armored car service, handle our coin and our cash, so no one has to leave with money, be safer. Beyond that, it didn't seem like he had any concerns, except for the large trucks. Now, in addition to what I just mentioned about the cash handling, we also have procedures in place for training of all team members, both inside and out, before they can lift the handle to pump gas, have to go through a series of training modules, as well as in the food service department. They can't service anything until they go through training, and we require managers of different levels to have serve safe certifications.
I do have a question, or maybe a statement. You mentioned that the officer had concern about large trucks. I thought it was the testimony at the last meeting that the pumps would be low-flow pumps, and that would mean that there's no tractor-trailer service because it would take so long to flow the gas in. Okay, fine. All right, just wanted that clear of record.
So just to clarify, Mr. Brower, you did tell the police that there will be no high-flow diesel at this location?
I didn't mention that there's no high-flow diesel, but I did say we don't service trucks.
Right.
That's not a preferred customer.
Right, but it is on record that the pumps are low pumps. And being on the board, I finally found out what that meant. Does the board have any questions for Mr. Brower? Yes, Mr. Sadat Ha?
Madam Chair?
Sure.
High-flow diesel means you're going to sell the diesel, but not for the trucks.
Yeah, so my understanding is with high-flow, that would be for large trucks, 18-wheelers, things of that nature. But we have diesel for certain, let's say, for example, Mercedes-Benz, they do use diesel, some of the engines. So it's low-flow, and that's the kind of customer that we would welcome, obviously not the large trucks.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Barone?
Mr. Brower, I understand that you are responsible for 80 stores in your introduction?
Yes, sir.
Can I ask, are those, excuse me, are those 80 stores gas and convenience stores, or just, in some cases, they're just stores?
They're both regular C-stores as well as gas sites.
Okay, so the question then would be, of the 80, roughly, how many are gas and convenience?
I believe total we have 90, 92?
Roughly.
Roughly, in our chain.
And then my final question would be, of those 90, how many are two acres?
That, I don't know the actual size.
Okay, I'll rephrase the question. How many roughly are less than five acres?
I mean, all of them, and I could certainly have Mr. Rich Lamont, who testified last time, to clarify, that would help the board.
I'm just looking for the answers through a couple of questions.
What I can say is that the vast majority of Quick Check sites are, I think, two acres in size. That's the sweet spot that we're looking at. I could ask Mr. Lamont to come back here, he's right here, to answer that question, if that's okay with the board.
The reasoning for the question was the application is looking for a variance, you know, from five to two. So I was just curious as to how many other locations, required variances and things like that. And if he can elaborate, then by all means.
Just to clarify, sorry.
Oh, there's no, oh yeah, it's there.
Mr. Lamont, would you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear, swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, to help you, God?
Yes, I do.
And just state your full name for the record. You might have to pull that microphone closer.
Yes, my name is Richard Lamont, L-A-M-O-N-T. I testify. I testified last time regarding our operations, and I can help John with this question a little bit. Generally, we need to be about two acres to fit our full facility, that's the gas pump, the gas canopy and the store. That, as I testified last time, is the ideal size for us. Anywhere where we would be, five acres would be more like a shopping center where we might have other tenants with us or something, but for a Quick Check alone, two acres is what we require.
I'm satisfied with that, thank you.
Thank you.
Does the board, excuse me, does the board have any other questions for Mr. Brower? Or Mr. Lamont at this point, since he was just sworn in again? None? Okay, moving on, Mr. Chang.
All right, perfect, thank you. And now we're going to have John Corak, traffic engineer from Stonefield Engineering Design, he's going to describe the traffic impact study that he worked on, and then he's going to walk us through how the parking is sufficient for the site, and there is no negative traffic impact from a traffic study metrics. So if I could have him sworn in and qualified as a professional traffic engineer.
Mr. Corak, would you raise your hand, do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you God?
I do.
And just state your full name for the record.
Certainly, it's John Corak, last name spelled C-O-R-A-K, with Stonefield Engineering and Design, 92 Park Avenue in Rutherford, New Jersey.
Here we have a few qualifications, please, boy, it must be rubbing off on me.
It's cold. Certainly, I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I hold a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from the College of New Jersey. I'm an expert in the field of traffic and transportation engineering. I've prepared over 100 traffic studies for land development applications, appeared before over 60 boards within the state of New Jersey, and also serve as the board's traffic engineer in four municipalities in the state.
Okay, we'll accept your qualifications, thank you, sir.
All right, so, Mr. Corak, if you could just walk us through the narrative, you know, how you got to the traffic impact study, what metrics you used, what you found, and just walk the board through the analysis and conclusions.
Yes, certainly, so when we put together our traffic studies for Quick Check, and we do do this fairly frequently, I have testified to a number of Quick Check applications in the past, as well as many of the other experts in my firm. What we first look at is a review of the site, a review of the surrounding site conditions, and I'll walk over here a bit too. I believe this is Exhibit A1 that was previously submitted to the board. This is the aerial exhibit that shows the site location along Plainfield Avenue at its terminus, or Kilmer Road's terminus, at the intersection here. And so what we have at this intersection from our initial site visit, we do have a four-way intersection that serves the Stent Diner, as well as the marketplace, and a traffic signal that's been recently reconstructed by the county to expand out Plainfield Avenue and account for a lot of the additional traffic volumes that have been added in the surrounding area from warehouse developments and the like. So we have Plainfield Avenue, County roadway, provides two lanes of travel in each direction, provides a left turn lane, so you can make those turning movements from Plainfield onto Kilmer, and from Plainfield into the site itself, has a 35 mile an hour speed limit, and has a principal arterial roadway that carries about 19,000 cars a day. And so when we look at that designation, a principal arterial, look at that word arterial, artery, it's pumping those cars, pumping that traffic through this area. So it is a busy area from a traffic perspective, but that doesn't necessarily make it a congested one to the point where, you know, no modifications or no further improvements are needed, in fact, this was just improved by the county to account for those traffic volumes. Kilmer Road, similarly, it's a minor arterial, so not quite the level of principal arterial, it does carry those traffic volumes from those developments in the vicinity to Plainfield Avenue, provides one lane of travel in each direction generally, and provides a 25 mile an hour speed limit, carries about 10,000 cars a day. So that makes up the general makeup of the roadway network in the immediate vicinity of the site. And the reason that we target the immediate vicinity is because Quick Check and its competitors, they draw the traffic volumes primarily from the cars that are already on the roadway network. Essentially, you're traveling from work back to home during the evening, you need to fuel up, you stop in at Quick Check, and then you return on your way. So that means you don't have really impacts further upstream, further downstream, right? We know that there's a little bit of congestion down by the train station where it does go back down to one lane, but ultimately, you know, a development like Quick Check, and I'll bring up the site exhibit, Exhibit A4, the movement's concentrated with Quick Check, and the traffic volumes really are occurring at Kilmer Road and Plainfield Avenue, and you don't see a modification or an increase in traffic at other intersections upstream or downstream of the site. As part of our traffic study, we did conduct turning movement counts at that signalized intersection, we conducted those earlier this year in March and in April. What we look at is the peak periods, 7 to 9 in the morning, to account for that weekday morning rush, 4 to 7 in the evening, to account for that weekday evening rush, and then again on Saturday from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., to account for that midday period where you're out shopping or outrunning errands. And so from there, we look to identify a peak hour within those specific time periods, that's what traffic engineers utilize, that's what we review, we look at that critical peak in the morning that occurred from 8 to 9 a.m., in the evening occurred from 5 to 6 p.m., and then on Saturday it occurred from 11:15 a.m. to 12:15 p.m. Next component from the traffic study, we actually analyze the capacity, the volume going in and out of this intersection, how it's functioning, and we do that by conducting a level of service analysis. So a level of service, it is that measure or metric that measures the volume and capacity through these intersections, it's graded on a scale from A to F, and unlike a traditional school report card where you're striving for all As, maybe you settle for a B or two, level of service in the traffic engineering world actually strives for a design level of service of around C or D. So when we look at how the intersection's performing, and we look at the volumes going through it, you know, the county has built out this intersection with a target design level of service in that C to D range, and that's what they've achieved with that reconstruction project back in 2019, 2020. So we have the individual movements at the intersection, we have the double left turn from Kilmer Road onto Plainfield Avenue, we have the two lanes of through traffic on Plainfield Avenue, we have the existing left turn movements going from Plainfield onto Kilmer, and from Plainfield into the site, sorry, the site without Quick Check. And those movements generally operate between levels of service B and D during each of those peak hours under existing conditions today. Next what we look at is the future condition, what did the volumes look like in a couple years without Quick Check, but with some of the other projects in the vicinity that have been approved, and of course, just general background growth within Middlesex County. So we do this by accounting for, or we do this with two components in mind, that general background growth, using background growth rates from the NJDOT, as well as approved developments that were not open at the time of the counts, which in our case include the Rivendell Heights, Rivendell Meadows, and we did also analyze our report to include the Lidl application that's just up the road on Plainfield Avenue. In the, so that essentially brings our traffic volumes to what we call a no-build condition. It's a condition where it's the future, two years in the future, Quick Check isn't there, this would be what happened if Quick Check was not built, and what we see are minor upticks in the total level of service, but still very much in that design range, those approaches operating at levels of service B to D, they start to get, you know, some of the Bs start to get closer to Cs, some of the Cs might start to get closer to Ds, but overall, operating well within, you know, the accepted practices and what Middlesex County is certainly looking to accomplish here at the intersection. The next piece is adding back in the Quick Check development, forecasting the traffic volumes generated by Quick Check, and then distributing them out to the roadway network. We do this using the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual, this is the industry standard for forecasting traffic volumes, it covers a number of land uses, including the gas station, convenience store use, that models a Quick Check or one of its competitors. And the unique thing about Quick Check and about these types of facilities is what I alluded to before, where it captures the traffic already on the roadway network. Based on IT data, about 75% of the traffic that comes to and from these sites during those peak hours are cars already on the road, so that greatly diminishes the overall impact. So instead of introducing a whole plethora of new vehicles to the area, these are cars that are already using the roadway networks, roadway network today, they make the turn into the Quick Check site, fuel up, and then return on their way without substantial adverse impact. And so as we route those vehicles to and from the Quick Check site, and then conduct another level of service analysis, we continue to see those levels of service in the B to D range for each of the approaches at the intersection, we continue to see that this intersection will operate in those acceptable windows that the county's looking for, and really hitting the design criteria that the county looking to implement when they widened out this intersection a few years ago. The next piece that we look at from a traffic study perspective, so we covered what's going on in the street, right, we've seen there's no adverse impact, we've seen that the levels of service generally remain unchanged, next piece we look at is how the access functions for the site, how the circulation works, how the parking works, and generally speaking, the vehicle movements on the site itself. So as far as access is concerned, we do have the right-hand driveway to the south on Plainfield Avenue, and then we have the full movement signalized driveway that ties into that existing curb cut that serves the Stent Diner today. We've worked with Middlesex County on that curb cut layout, they like, they prefer the curb cut to remain, generally speaking, where it is today, and with the traffic signal and the way it operates, it gives Kilmer Road green, yellow, red, and then it gives the Quick Check site green, yellow, red, meaning that the, there is no possibility of overlap between the double left, between the movements coming out of the Quick Check site, and ultimately makes a safe and efficient operation coming in and out of the facility. On the site itself, we do have a pylon sign with 100 square foot area, this is important for visibility for the site, it's important to make sure that the patrons can see in advance that the Quick Check site's coming up, as it does capture those volumes from the roadway network, it gives ample time for drivers to make that decision point, to get over into that left lane, make the turn into the Quick Check site, or merge over a right lane and make that turn as well. Also provide 30-foot wide drive aisles on site, which meets that Quick Check standard, they like to have a little bit oversized drive aisles compared to the 24-foot standard that allows for better maneuverability in and out of parking spaces, provides more efficient, more convenient operations, that's vital to Quick Check's operation. Parking spaces are 10 by 20, whereas the requirement's 9 by 18. Again, this is part of the convenience, it's part of the efficiency of the site, you do not have to maneuver into such a tight parking space, we do have the larger spaces, and it just helps with overall operation, and all of those things fit within this two-acre lot profile. These are all desirable attributes of Quick Checks, these are all things that on less desirable sites, I've seen sacrificed in one way or another, but here we have a site that very much meets that Quick Check mold and fits, and the Quick Check will fit well within the site. We have a dedicated loading zone in the rear of the store, we have a dedicated fueling zone in front of the canopy, that doesn't interfere, neither of these things interfere with onsite parking, there's very little to no customer interaction with any of these areas, we are able to provide an area for oversized vehicles, think landscapers with trailers, the light, it's typically not tractor-trailers that are utilizing this, this type of site, in fact, as we just discussed, there's no high-flow diesel, but the site does provide the circulation that if a tractor-trailer did come on site, it could safely maneuver around the site and be escorted off. The tractor-trailer would not be permitted to fuel there, but it can maneuver the site to essentially leave the site without impacting any of the site features, any parked cars or anything like that. So overall, the site layout works well, it works very efficiently, our parking exceeds the parking requirement for the municipality for this development, do provide 62 parking spaces, which does meet that Quick Check standard and is necessary and sufficient to accommodate the high turnover demand associated with use like this. And overall, this type of development, this lot is well situated, along Kilmer Road, Plainfield Avenue at that intersection, interacts very well with the signal, the site itself is laid out very well to accommodate the traffic flows and the traffic patterns, and ultimately, this development will not have any adverse impact on the roadway network.
Any questions for Mr. Corak? I have one question. I've never noticed it before, how do trucks know that you do not have high-flow diesel? I don't know if this would be a topic he would, or Mr. Lamont, but as he's been speaking, that thought came to my mind, number one, and number two, can you give us an idea of how long it would take, say, my point is this, if a tractor-trailer knows that there's no high-flow diesel, doesn't he know or she know from the beginning that we'll take maybe 15, 20, 25 minutes to fill up, but how do they know that there's no high-flow diesel there?
I hate to say, but I think I'm going to put an "I don't know" on the record.
Okay.
We, I guess the truckers have a sense of what size of facility they need to come in, I know that truckers are deathly afraid of getting their rigs stuck in places where they can't fit, and that's one of our biggest concerns, I mean, if a trailer truck were to pull up to our pumps, they would completely block the drive aisle, they would be practically to the other side of the parking, so I don't know that I have a very clever answer for that, other than we don't advertise for trucks, we don't, yeah.
Yeah, I know, but I'm just trying to bring a point across that it will be very difficult, or the truck driver will know that he wouldn't go there if you don't have high-flow pumps, because he knows it's going to take 20, 25 minutes out of his schedule just to fill up, but you never advertise, I mean, I've never noticed it on any gas station sign, we have high-flow pumps, or we have low-flow pumps, or whatever.
Yeah, I'm afraid I don't have a very good answer to that, other than we don't, it doesn't seem to be a problem for us at our facilities, I think truckers know, you know, it's not meant for them.
Yeah, the truckers are acutely aware of how long it takes, because time is everything that they do.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I'm assuming to load a tractor-trailer on low-flow pump must take at least 20, 25 minutes, no?
Yeah, it takes much longer.
Takes much longer, yeah, much longer than a car.
Half hour plus, depending on how big their diesel tanks are.
Well, if we so approve, I'm assuming you will have no problem with us putting condition that there will be no tractor-trailer, since you're not going to...
Yeah, we would expect that, absolutely.
Okay.
I think, Madam Chair, I would put the question differently, I mean, would the letting these selling diesel at this facility go as a part of an approval? Because, one, the truck gets in, they're going to choke up all the traffic on the busy section. It's not going to be backing and backing up, you're going to jam the traffic for half an hour.
Yeah, the other thing that my colleague just helped me with too is, the big over-the-road trucks are used to being able to fuel on both sides simultaneously too, most of the big diesel facilities have like a master and a secondary pump so that they can fill from both sides, so we obviously don't have that. So it really is just designed for cars that have diesel, that use diesel fuel.
I understand that, but if the truck gets in, because there's a lot of truck traffic on the road, on Plainfield and Kilmer, and if truck gets in without knowing it because you are selling diesel, how would it back it up, and what happens at that point?
So if a truck were to pull in, right, it would, regardless of which entrance point it came from, though it's unlikely to come from the south because of the train overpass, right, the trucks typically don't fit underneath that overpass, so likely to come in on the Kilmer Road entrance, possibly straight across from Kilmer, and then they would, in order to even possibly look to stage for fueling, they would be at this first pump on the north, right? And when you're, when the truck is sitting there, it's easy for the onsite fueling attendant to inform the truck, you cannot fuel here, and that position that the truck is in can circulate through the wide drive aisles of the Quick Check site, and easily make its way off of the premises without spending any sort of considerable amount of time on the site itself. It works well for circulation, the natural flow of an errant truck that may come on site, very unlikely that they do, but if they do, they can easily get off the site without any backing maneuvers.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Corak or Mr. Lamont, as long as he's standing up there.
In reference to Mr. McDowell's report, in the plan review comments, G, this facility shall be designed to accommodate the internal maneuvering of WB-53 tractor-trailers, which will likely patronize this business, only a WB-50 is shown. will likely patronize this business, only a WB-50 is shown. My understanding of W-50 is the tractor trailer is forty-two point, forty-two and a half feet long.
Right, the, the trailer part.
Correct.
Correct. So the WB-50 that we show is the size of the truck used for Quick Check's largest delivery to the store, you know, where they use the loading zone in the rear, and it's also the size of the fuel tanker that's utilizing the fueling zone in the front. And as we've been discussing here, tractor trailers would not fuel on site, but if a WB-53 or WB-67, the largest tractor trailer, were to arrive on the site, that truck can circulate and get off the site without making any backing maneuvers, we have run those truck runs and confirmed that.
But they don't know they can't get, go in there and get fuel, right?
So, as we were talking before, these truckers are acutely aware that gas stations, generally speaking, do not serve their, their tractor trailers, unless they're advertising specifically as high flow diesel, right, you typically see a, a separate truck canopy for that, and there are a few gas stations out there that do have, you know, advertised high flow diesel, have the double tubes, this is not one of them, and this is not a site that would likely be destined for that truck traffic.
So the WB-53, how long is that tractor trailer?
So, my interpretation of the comment is a little bit of a confusion between a WB-50 and a WB-67. So the WB-67, the largest tractor trailer, is the tractor trailer that has the fifty-three foot long trailer, right, and so I think that's what is being discussed there, as opposed to a trailer with three extra feet of wheelbase between the 50 and the 53, but in total has that fifty-three foot long trailer, and a, a total length of about seventy or so feet.
So in reference to the deliveries, what, what times of day will the deliveries be coming?
Deliveries are typically during that off-peak period, Mr. Lamont can test, can, can touch on that a little bit more, I know you probably spoke about that at the last hearing with the operations.
Yeah, we, the, the fueling is on an as-needed basis, so it varies from day to day, and that's a system that helps us assure that the tanks are always sufficiently full, which is very important to us, so they are generally random throughout the time of day. The, the only restriction I'm really aware of on the other trucks is that, I think they generally try to avoid their peak hours, because it's a stress on the store to have a delivery truck show up at the same time they're at their busiest times, the morning rush, or the lunch rush, or to some extent, at some locations, even a, a small dinner rush. So they try to spread it out.
Madam Chair, are there going to be a sign at the front entrance that says that we do not sell diesel for the trucks?
None's proposed, but, Rich.
We have put signs on, when, when asked, we have put signs on the, the canopy column itself that says no fueling for tractor trailers, and if, if this is a concern of the boards, we could do something like that.
You are proposing that there's no high flow pumps, so you got to put there, right?
Yeah.
Mr. Bignell, if we wanted to make, if we so approve and wanted to make that a condition, does that affect anything in your report, or does anything have to change for signage or anything?
Well, two things, Madam Chair. The, I wanted to make sure that the right sized vehicle that was fueling the pumps had the ability to maneuver on site, so that was the confusion with the SB-53 and 50, and he just testified that it's an S-53, right?
That WB-50 is the, the size of the vehicle that delivers fuel.
Okay, so that's why I showed that, that one, if that's the case, that's fine in my report. As far as the sign goes, it's been my experience that if, if you don't have the high pump diesel, tractor trailers will avoid it, because they don't, it takes too long to fill a tank, and they're gonna have to provide some type of signage, because if you get more than one or two tractor trailers on site, that's gonna really mess up the, the flow of things on site. So you really don't want them there, it should be a condition of approval that they can't have them there, and they should certainly, other than for the fueling, put signage up, I think that's a great idea that Mr. Davies has.
But my question is, if the sign, if we ask for signage, does, how does that affect the report? Do we have any variances, do we have anything, do we have to worry about where the sign's gonna go and what have you?
You know, I, I believe they're small enough and are informational enough, that's not a really a sign variant situation.
Okay, so my question to you is if we do approve and we will make a condition of signage, do you have any problem with that, Mr. Lamont?
No, and we could actually discuss what we've done in the past on other locations where it's a smaller informational type sign, that would, that would give some warning to the truckers not to come on the site.
The only thing, Madam Chair, is that you should kind of narrow down the, the fueling times, when they dump the fuel on site, when they're gonna reload the tanks and stuff, there should be a specific time that they go on the site and off the site, and then they're not there during the day, because what's happening is, if that's what's on the site too, it's the tractor trailers on the roadway, you know, the traffic flow and things like that, so off-peak should be really pushed by any condition of approval.
Well, as I mentioned, the, the, the fuel trucks come on an as-needed basis, so we don't always have control over that, but I would point out from my original testimony that we have one, maybe two trucks a day, so there are gonna be many days where we have one fuel truck through the whole course of the day, and in that case, I would, I would, you know, posit to the board that, that's not really a, a cause of congestion, or would create a problem, they come in, they have a dedicated place to stop, and then they would head right back out. So we would prefer not to have the fuel deliveries restricted, frankly, because we don't think it's really a problem, it's not a congestion problem. The number is very small.
We'll leave that up to the board at the end. Any other questions of Mr. Bauer or Miss, I'm not, sorry, Mr. Bauer, Mr. Lamont or Mr. Korak? Yes, Mr. Korak?
One more.
Sure.
In reference to Mr. Carley's report, in reference to the northeast corridor line, the train bridge there, it allows a, a clearance of thirteen feet eight inches, the design vehicles have a height of thirteen feet six inches, the designer and the traffic engineer should review this proposed arrangement. Have you reviewed this?
Right, so the, the train overpass, south of the site, does have that clearance there of thirteen eight, where the, the design trucks are thirteen six, it's very, very narrow. I think our original truck turning movements may have shown a, a right turn entrance coming from that direction, and the reason that we typically show the right turns is that it's the most difficult maneuver for the truck to make with the turning radii. That said, Quick Check is able to control its deliveries, especially with its larger vehicles, will certainly direct them not to come from that way, the other vendors, box truck vendors, et cetera, I mean, these are all trained professionals, they would not be arriving from, you know, from that direction, and ultimately, we would not anticipate any truck traffic coming to or leaving toward the south where the train overpasses.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Yes, Mr. De...
Yeah, Madam. So, assuming that you have all sixteen pumps running, how many cars you can take from the curb that the, the car, the enters from Plainfield Avenue heading north to the pump, to the, for it to get to the pump, so even if they back it up two at a time on every pump, how many car it can take?
Right, so there's sixteen fueling positions at the pumps.
That's sixteen?
Yep, and then, aside from stacking area within the thirty foot drive aisles behind the pumps.
Right.
Also, space exists in between each pump.
How many it will take? My, my concern is there are more than thirty-two cars trying to get in for filling the tanks, it takes about five minutes for that car to fill in, roughly around. Traffic would back up on Plainfield Avenue, right?
Yeah, that sort of demand is, is largely unheard of at these facilities with this many fueling positions.
I, I see Costco nearby there, and I see the traffic there.
Sure, and Costco is a substantially different gas station operation than Quick Check is, we've done studies at Costco's, and yes, they do have that sort of queuing, they have that sort of draw and demand, but Quick Check and its direct competitors, which is not Costco, do not operate like that.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Bignell?
With, to follow up with that, it's, it's a supply and demand thing, Costco lowers the price of the gas, so people will get in line and wait a little longer and stack the way they do over there. It has, it has nothing to do with the design at some point, because you put so many cars, if you lower the price to a, to a real low price, or in this state, to what you, you can't sell it for anything less than what you paid for at wholesale, that kind of controls the flow of cars on site. So if you, you charge a little bit more money for the gas, and you get less people getting in line to, to buy it, the reason why it stacks at Costco is because they try and, they try and keep the price as low as they possibly can, which I'm not saying is not a bad thing, but it's a kind of a different kind of flow. You, if they lowered the price on this, you couldn't design the, the site for, for, for many more cars, and it, it's, it's a, it's a product of the, of the price of the gas, not the design of the site.
But, but the Quick Check prices are very competitive to Wawa and, and, I'm not sure about Costco, but comparatively cheaper than the name brands ExxonMobil.
Yeah, they, they don't back up at Wawa and, and Quick Check like they do at Costco or at Sam's Club, because it's a different approach, and they, like I said, they're not looking, they're looking to get you onto the site, so you go shopping there, they'll sell you the gas for what they pay for it. This, they're trying to make a profit on the gas, so it's a little different operation.
My, my only question is, if the cars are stacking on, on the Plainfield Avenue, what's the plan? Now it's going to back up the traffic on Plainfield.
Right, so I think the design of the site does help solve a lot of your concerns. For one, in between each pumps, you know, some of the older stations that you may have frequented, you can't maneuver between vehicles, meaning if you're waiting behind a car, they're not done, but the car in front is and leaves, an older station, you couldn't get around that vehicle, but at this, at this location, there is that sufficient width, if, even if you have two vehicles, you know, fueling side by side, if you will, there's enough room in the middle to essentially provide the area for a car to go to that available pump. We do have generous drive aisles throughout the site, and, and ultimately, you know, the, the fueling circulation turnover times versus the amount of traffic that does come through to a Quick Check, it's not something where it does spill back onto Plainfield Avenue or otherwise.
In, in case it goes, what are the options?
I mean, first of all, there's, there's fuel attendants on the ground, right, it's a full service operation, if, if traffic is backing up, you can, you can usher those, those vehicles to, to a new location, you know, to, to swing around and otherwise wait in internal drive aisles or park and wait, if that, if the demand is so popular, that that is, you know, that that is something that needs to, you know, to be rectified. We do have a surplus of parking versus your parking requirement, again, that's part of the convenience aspect of the facility, and in theory, that could be used as, as waiting area if the, if the demand is so high.
You and I both know that guy who's coming to fill in the gas, not gonna park the car there and wait, he's gonna stay in a line and would stack up.
Right, and the, the demand of this site isn't one where you should ever have to do that, but in the hypothetical that we're talking about, where you have the line of cars, these are the options that are able to be provided on site.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions from the board? Yes, Mr.?
Madam Chair? The, the facility in Piscataway, how many acres is that one, Quick Check?
I'm sorry, the, the one I referred to last time on Lakeview by, by the Harris Steel, I'm gonna tell you that I think that was a twelve acre site, and we have two acres there, I think, it's, it's two to three acres, and then the remainder is gonna be some future thing that we're not involved with, another ten acres or so.
Thank you.
Mr. Comber, did you have a question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The driveway on the southern side, you said that it would be right turn only coming in?
Correct.
Okay, and then egress is gonna be?
No egress.
No egress whatsoever?
Just a right turn in.
Okay, so if you enter the site, you can only exit the site through the signalized intersection at Kilmer?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions? Moving along.
Thank you.
Sure. I'll make one comment, you know, the number of pumps that we're providing is trying to avoid...
You want to bring that, yeah, a little bit closer?
The number of pumps is also trying to avoid that queuing issue, the, the, the number of, so you, there's more places that the cars could fuel, and there's more queuing area, so that was in the consideration as well of the design, so that's in addition to what Mr. Korak just discussed. Moving on to, I'd like to go to architecture, Mr. Oliver Young, from GK&amp;A Architects, he's gonna present to the board the, I think, well, the aesthetically pleasing design and highlight any of the environmentally friendly design elements as well.
Mr. Young, if you'd raise your right hand, do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you God?
Yes, I do.
Please state your full name for the record.
Full name is Oliver Young, last name Y-O-U-N-G.
Some qualifications, please, Mr. Young?
Sure, gladly. Good evening, everyone, my name's Oliver Young, I'm a principal at GK&amp;A Architects, our business address is thirty-six Ames Avenue, A-M-E-S, in Rutherford, New Jersey. I hold a bachelor's degree in architecture from Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute, located in Troy, New York. I have practiced in the field of architecture for just over twenty-four years, I have been a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey since two thousand and six, my license is current, and I have appeared at over fifty planning and zoning boards throughout the state of New Jersey and been accepted at all.
Okay, thank you, we'll accept your qualifications, Mr. Young.
Thank you very much.
So, Mr. Young, if you could, in narrative, take us to your design, I think it's quite beautifully designed, and if you could just walk us all through it.
Sure, I'll quickly touch upon the floor plan, what I mounted over there is a copy of the drawings that were submitted to the board, I'm not sure if I need to mark that as an exhibit or not.
We don't need to mark it if it's one of the submissions, if you'd just reference which submission it is.
Will do, this is sheet A1 of drawings A1 through four, it's the floor plan and elevations prepared under my direction at GK&amp;A Architects, I'm gonna focus on the first page, A1, the building floor plan, it's a five thousand six hundred and seventy square foot footprint, seventy-seven feet wide, sixty-eight feet deep, there's a bump out at the front of the building, which is, faces Plainfield Avenue, it's fifty-two feet, ten inches wide by eight feet, eleven inches deep, in terms of a C-store, this is pretty typical of a layout, the customer area is at the core of the floor plan, and the perimeter, the three sides of it, are the back of house, the support area, the storage, the office, et cetera, the customer checkout area is at the bump out that I previously mentioned, the checkout counters are located right there, and they're flanked by two entrance and exit vestibules for the customer on both the left and right-hand side. I am going to touch briefly upon sprinklers and fire protection and the construction of this building. This building is considered under the building code Type 5B, unprotected construction, it's all wood framed walls and wood framed roof structure, and it's considered an M mercantile use by the New Jersey Building Code. Building Code requirements for the state of New Jersey, sprinklers are required for any M mercantile use that is twelve thousand square feet or greater, this building is less than half that size, we are under six thousand square feet. Additionally, New Jersey is under a transition with the building code, when we submitted these drawings over the summer, we were under the two thousand and eighteen code cycle, since then, the two thousand and twenty-one code cycle has been adopted, and if we were fortunate enough to be approved, we would be submitting the drawings to the building department under the two thousand and twenty-one building code, that requirement stays the same for sprinklers at twelve thousand square feet, so we are well under that requirement. I am gonna put up a new board, it's the, an exhibit, I'm not sure what I need to mark it, Jeff?
A4 was the rendering that, I think we were at five, I think, but, just double checking.
No, I didn't write A4. I could have missed it.
All right.
Two A5 to be saved.
We're at A5, okay. This exhibit is color rendered building and fuel canopy elevations, A6, I'm going to re-mark it at A6 right now. All right, as I was saying, this is sheet R1, it's color rendered building and fuel canopy elevations prepared by our firm, dated October twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. This elevation here reflects the newer Quick Check design, in two thousand and eighteen, Quick Check tasked us with redesigning their prototype design to come up with a more modern and fresh feel, since then, there have been several built, there's more under construction... Since then, there have been several built, there's more under construction, and I will reference the store that just opened in September in Piscataway is a very similar building. In regards to massing, the overall height of the building from grade is 23 foot six on the four elevations. At the west elevation, which is the front of the store facing Plainfield Avenue, we bumped the building up at that entry area to 27 feet six. And then you'll see on the left-hand side of that elevation, we have a green tower element that tops off at 32 feet to the top of that. The two prevalent building materials here are brick at the lower portion of the building and an EFIS system, which is short for exterior insulation and finish system, at the upper half of the building. The brick caps off at about 12 feet with a brown stone material and then we have a light gray EFIS up to the top, which is topped off with a 10-inch decorative coping, the same color as the EFIS material. At the front elevation, with the bump out where the two customer entrances are, that brick stops at 3 foot 6 inches. Above there, we have glazing. The glazing stops at the height of 12 feet and we have a flat awning that projects out over the face of the building in a light green color. The awning starts at the Quick Check tower, continues all the way to the right-hand side and actually projects out over the customer entrance on the right-hand side for about nine feet. Up above that flat awning, you'll also see glazing at the front entry, it goes up to a height of 16 feet and at the right-hand side where we have additional glazing, that's the seating area on the floor plan, we have 10 seats there, that tops off at approximately 18 feet 4 inches. The storefront framing material is a dark bronze finish and I do want to mention that the glazing above this light green band is not visible glazing, it's called spandrel glazing, so you can't see through it. Our actual ceiling height inside the store is at approximately 12 feet, which is in line with the height of that flat awning. I will touch briefly on one last thing here, I mentioned the massing of the building. The 23 foot six I mentioned, that's not the roof height, that's the parapet height, which is a wall framed on top of the roof. The average roof height here is approximately 19 feet. So what that means is you have a minimum 4 foot 6 high parapet and what that does is it provides adequate screening for all the rooftop equipment we have. We have three air conditioning units, a few condensers for the walk-in, numerous vents for plumbing and several exhaust fans for the bathrooms and one of the ovens in the store and none of that will be visible and that's accurately represented here in these renderings. At the bottom of the page, you'll see we have rendered two of the four fuel canopy elevations. The clear height to the underside of the fascia here is a minimum of 14 feet 6 inches. The fascia itself is 3 feet tall, the lower 8 inches of that is the light green color, same as you see on the flat awning at the building. The upper portion of that, again, is a green material, it's, it's metal and it's the same green that you see on the green tower on the Quick Check. The brick columns, which are a little bit hard to see, they're hidden behind the fuel dispensers, those are 2 feet by 2 feet, that's the same exact brick that we use on the building. So there's a very nice synergy between the building and the fuel canopy in terms of colors and materials. I'm going to jump over to signage quickly in regards to the building and the fuel canopy. For the building, we have three proposed building-mounted signs, one sign that says Quick Check and then two Qs. The Quick Check is centered on the west elevation over the customer entry area and one of the Qs is at the top of the green tower on that west elevation. The second Q is on the north elevation where the green tower wraps around the corner. The square footage of these three signs, the Quick Check is 57.7 square feet, each Q is 22.6 square feet, so we have a total of three building-mounted signs at 102.9 square feet. None of this triggers any variances in terms of quantity or square footage. There are variances triggered for each sign, though, due to an ordinance requirement of a maximum height of 20 feet to the sign. We exceed that for all three signs. As I mentioned in my previous testimony, the height to the top of this glazing was approximately 16 feet 4 inches. This Quick Check signage here is centered from the top of that glazing to the underside of the roof parapet and the top of those letters is approximately 22 feet 8 inches. The top of the Q on both sides of the tower is at 30 feet 3 inches and again, the ordinance requires a maximum, allows a maximum height of 20 feet. So we are seeking variances for the height. I will argue as to the aesthetic placement of those signs is critical to the overall architectural design. In regards to signage on the fueling canopy, we have three proposed signs on the fuel canopy, one at the west elevation facing Plainfield Avenue and then we have one fuel canopy sign each on the north elevation and also the south elevation, both representative here in the lower right-hand corner. Each one of those fuel canopy signs is 22.6 square feet. And I will state for the record that all building and fuel canopy signs are internally illuminated. In fact, on the fuel canopy, none of this fascia is illuminated except for the Quick Check sign itself, which is white, the color being slightly different than the Quick Check colors that you see on the building elevations. Jeff, that I believe covers my direct, is there anything else you'd like me to address?
Uh, no, that was thorough, thank you.
Thank you.
Does the board have any questions for Mr. Young? Mr. Comba?
Thank you, ma'am chair. Sir, you just, your last point regarding the fuel canopy sign as being illuminated, it's not, so I'm assuming it's, it's digital, is it digital?
It's not digital, it's LED internal illumination.
Okay, it's not scrolling?
No, there's no moving parts on this sign.
Just making sure, thank you very much.
Any other questions for Mr. Young? Moving along, Mr. Chang.
Um, I'd like to move to our planner, Ms. Christine Caphone.
I got my phone. I owe you.
Have I got her sworn in and qualified?
Caphone, if you'd raise your right hand, do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you God? Yes, I do. And please state your full name for the record. It's Christine Nazaro, N-A-Z-Z-A-R-O, Caphone, C-O, F is in Frank, O-N-E. Business address is 125 Half Mile Road, Suite 200, Red Bank, New Jersey, 07701. I am testifying this evening as a licensed professional planner. I have been qualified here in Edison before both your planning and zoning board on many occasions. I've also been qualified as an expert witness before probably 450 other planning and zoning boards throughout the state. My licenses are current and valid, I teach planning and zoning courses for the Rutgers Center for Government Services.
We'll accept your qualifications, you're right, you've been here more times than we can count.
Been here quite a few, a frequent flyer.
So, Ms. Caphone, if you could, just take us through the narrative, obviously if you could emphasize the particular suitability of the property, how we're removing some of the non-conformities and that there really is no negative to the surrounding area.
Of course, so the subject property is located in the township's PB Planned Business District Zone. In that zone, there are a number of permitted uses, which the retail sale of gasoline is not, the combination of that and a retail convenience store is not a permitted uses. I would point out to the board that as Mr. Chang indicated, there are a number of existing non-conformities that are going to be eliminated in conjunction with this application while we are seeking a D1 use variance. And what that means is, is a non-inherently beneficial use for a D1 use variance, we have an obligation to demonstrate that the site is particularly suited, that there are special reasons and that we satisfy the negative criteria, the public good as well as the Medici reconciliation. So with that, the first thing I usually like to talk about when I'm doing a D variance is the particular suitability and this board is certainly familiar with that concept and certainly familiar with that concept as it relates to convenience stores. So when you're talking about site suitability, it has been held that it has to be site-specific, it can't, we can't testify as to the corridor or what we're across from, while the board can certainly consider those things as it looks at the negative criteria or the impact of the public good, there has to be something site-specific about this use that makes it particularly suitable. And particularly suitable is an elusive concept. I was actually on a panel a few years back at the Institute of Continuing Legal Education on the elusive concept of particular suitability, because it is a term that remains undefined in the municipal land use law. And while, as a board, you have to find that the site is particularly suitable, you certainly don't have to find that it is uniquely suitable and that this is the only location that this site can go or that there is a demonstrated need to have the site at this location. That is not a burden of proof with regard to particular suitability. And here in the instant application, I think the board can certainly consider the fact that this is located at a signalized intersection and that there are a number of existing non-conformities on the site today, which is something that's not been a condition on other applications that I know have been preceded before this board and I think that that is a distinction with a difference, that this application is eliminating its situation with respect to the existing non-conforming impervious coverage. The not, the impervious coverage on this property today sits at nearly 100%, it's just over 96%. 80% is permissible in the PB zoning district and the applicant is bringing that down to about 70.7%. So I believe when you look at these factors and you look at the fact that this is an existing property, it's an undersized property and I'll talk about that a little bit more because the PB zone requires five acres and this is a two-acre site. That becomes important when you look at, you know, can the site accommodate and, you know, is there appropriate room for the site? So I think when you look at that and you, you unpack that into still what exists on the property today and the fact that this property is an existing developed nearly 100% impervious site with, with not only bulk criteria that's non-conforming, but actually use criteria that's non-conforming on the site today. The site has, as you know, is the site of the tire, store, the Stellton Diner and in the middle of those two uses is the Pepper Market. So this, that in my opinion renders the site particularly suitable. In addition to particular suitability, we have a burden of proof with respect to the positive criteria. And the positive criteria talks about promoting special reasons or purposes of the municipal land use law. Statutorily, we would have to satisfy one or more of the purposes of the municipal land use law for the grant of the application to meet its burden of proof. They're not unique to the township of Edison, I didn't make them up in my 27 years of practicing, they come right out of the statute at 40 colon 55D dash two. Now, I believe there are a number of them that are advanced by this application. Criteria A talks about promoting the general welfare. This is the site that I think we will repurpose and small R redevelop, which means we will redevelop the existing site. And when I say small R redevelop, that means the site just hasn't been put in a redevelopment area, meeting the, the local redevelopment and housing law criteria, but we're repurposing, we're demolishing the existing structures. As, as I'm sure the board's been out to the site, you see there's a complete lack of formal landscaping on the site today, so I think what the applicant is doing will certainly provide, as Mr. Lamont testified at our first hearing, what we believe to be fills, fills a need. Certainly, we would not represent to the board that there are not other fueling options in the area or convenience options in the area, but there is, this is a combination of those two uses, which doesn't exist on some of the other fueling and convenience locations. So we think that this is a benefit to the area and will certainly fill a need in the area, so that certainly hits criteria A of the land use law. Criteria C talks about promoting adequate light air and open space. Now, it's commonly accepted that, and I'll talk about the bulk criteria a little bit more in my testimony, but it's commonly accepted that when you're doing a D use variance, the bulk criteria is subsumed into that D variance. That was the price of education, that's because it's really unfairly prejudicial to an applicant to hold them to the bulk standards of a zone where the use wasn't contemplated. So we are, however, eliminating the non-conformity with respect to the lot coverage and bringing that well below what's permitted in the zone and we're introducing, as was testified to by Mr. Kunsman last month, a substantial planting plan, street trees, landscape buffering, introducing quite a bit of green onto the site that doesn't exist today. And we are also improving some of the bulk criteria with regard to the setbacks. Currently, there are existing side yard setback non-conformities on the property at 17, or I'm sorry, the side yard setbacks are non-conforming at 7.4 and 37.1 feet, where 50 and 100 feet is required in the PB zone. As far as the front yard setback, we are not eliminating that non-conformity, but we are improving it. The existing building is 17.6 feet and we're proposing the canopy to be 57. Now, while we need a variance for that canopy, that is one of those things that in my opinion is subsumed into the D variance because the bulk criteria of the PB were not crafted to allow a gasoline filling station. But when you look at that and you look at the impact of it, of course, the front yard setback for the zone is 100 feet. 17.6 exists and we're proposing 57.01 for our canopy, but the board well knows that the canopy is an open air structure, so the massing of that is certainly going to perform to the street level different than a structure would that had four walls and is enclosed. So with all of that said, I think the board can look at criteria C of the land use law, which talks about having adequate light air and open space. Criteria G of the municipal land use law talks about providing sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses. This is approximately a two-acre site, which I'm not sure if Mr. Lamont testified to this last month, but I can certainly speak to the fact, I have done literally dozens of, of Quick Check applications in my career and I know that their site criteria looks for a site of about two acres. In addition, I think the board can certainly take notice of the fact that in Mr. Bignell's planning reviews, both his August 22nd and his October 24th review letter, he provides a nice comparison and it's for comparison only because our site is certainly not governed by these standards with respect to use or bulk. But he provides a nice, a nice for comparison only, that when proposed in the neighboring GB, and I'm looking at page three of his August, his October 24th review letter, for comparison only, when proposed in the neighboring GB or GBH zone, the following standards would apply. And there he runs through the criteria for lot area, lot width, lot depth, minimum side yard setbacks, minimum rear yard setbacks, minimum gross floor area, maximum building height, maximum percent building coverage, maximum impervious coverage, maximum floor area ratio, the maximum number of gasoline low-flow diesel dispensers, maximum number of stories, maximum canopy height, maximum C-store building height, fuel canopy setback in the GBH. This applicant wouldn't violate a single one of those standards. The only one that he has a TBD next to is the number of low-flow diesel dispensers and we've already confirmed for the board that that number is two, so we certainly comply with that. And I think that that becomes important and while I'm certainly not going to call out each one of these bulk criteria, I will call out one of them, which is the minimum lot area. So, and that's 1.5 acres. So as a community, Edison has decided that 1.5 acres is a sufficient size for this type of use. Now, that doesn't mean that you've decided that that applies here because certainly we still do need the use variance as we're in the PB zone, but I certainly think that it was provided in Mr. Bignell's planning consulting report and as a planner, that is something that we routinely do. When we're testifying and we're looking to provide for the board a testimony and relating a use, it is not uncommon, I would actually say it's quite common practice, to look at how the municipality treats that use and what they consider to be minimum or maximum governing standards for that. So I think with that being said, it certainly would be appropriate here for the board to rely on criteria G, which talks about sufficient space in appropriate location. The other thing I think makes G a reasonable finding for this board is that there are literally hundreds of units, residential units in and around the property and hundreds of units, nearly 500 units planned and programmed for the immediate vicinity. So I think that there is sufficient space and this is an appropriate location, in my opinion, for the proposed use. The last positive criteria that I'm going to cite is criteria I, which talks about creating a desirable visual environment. Mr. Young went through the architecture, I think that certainly the program that we have for the site will increase the curb appeal of the site over what exists today with the combination of new structures that are new, state-of-the-art, well, well-designed. They have a common architectural theme between the canopy and the primary structure and the introduction of landscaping allows us as an application to rely on criteria I. So again, statutorily, to meet our burden of proof with respect to the positive criteria, we have to advance one or more purposes of the land use law. I cited criteria A, C, G, and I, giving the specific reasons that I, as a planner, believe they are applicable. We also have a burden of proof to demonstrate that the negative criteria is satisfied. Now, the negative criteria really has two prongs to it and that's the impact on the zone plan and the impact on the public good. Clearly, the impact on the zone plan is, is how we impact, you know, the township's intent of the PB Planned Business District. And then the, the public good, of course, is the area that is around here. So when you- So when you look at the PB planned business district and the minimum five acres and why that zone was put in place, the PB district was designed for office park and business development. And I think our immediate neighbor, the Metroplex Office Complex, is a great example as to what that zone was accomplished to do, right? That zone provided for large office parks. Our neighbor has structures on it that have well over 100,000 square feet of office space. And then when you look at our lot, it's what I would consider a remainder lot to the PB zone. There is no way this lot, given what's developed around it, can ever cure itself to be an office park. It's never going to be able to perform in conjunction with the five-acre minimum because the land area doesn't exist. We have two acres. Also, when you look at the other bulk relief that's required in conjunction with this application, the lot area is two acres where five is required. The depth is 400, where we have 301.3. The width is 300, where it's 294.8. Now, those variances, the lot area, the depth, and the width, are all a function of the existing conditions of the property. They are not really related to the... not really, they're not at all related to the proposed quick check. Any application that was coming before the board to develop this configuration of property would have to seek those variances because you only have two acres where five is permitted. You only have a certain depth, and if you can't acquire additional property to create it, you're dealt with a certain size and shape of piece of property. So I think, you know, from a planning point of view, clearly, the zone, the PB zone, does not permit this use. But I also think that this is perhaps not a use that you, the board, or the governing body would consider in other PB zone properties. But not all PB lots are created the same. This is what I would consider a remainder lot at a signalized intersection that is certainly not capable of being developed in conjunction with the intended use for the planned business park district. The other thing I'll say is when you look at the PB zoning district and you look at... there are in that zone a number of uses that are prohibited outright. And this use does not rise to the level of being one of the uses that are actually prohibited in the PB zone, which include used car and truck sales and lots, arcades, ammunitions and explosives and fireworks, heavy manufacturing, trailer camps, private garages, fertilizer plants, the processing and canning of food and wholesale distribution, and drive-in restaurants. So those are things that were enumerated as specifically prohibited in the PB zone. We still do need the use variance, of course, but I think the board can certainly take notice of that when you're considering the impact on the zone plan. But more important, the impact on the zone plan, in my opinion, is the fact that this is really a two-acre remainder lot that is incapable of being developed in accordance with what I believe was the vision for the PB zone. And again, those bulk criteria that I said are not a function of the quick check. They are a function of the existing conditions of the property. So when you look at the negative criteria and the impact on the zone plan, the PB zone, and the impact on the public good, I think the board can certainly conclude that there's no substantial detriment. And that's the test. The test doesn't ask you to hold us or any other applicant to a standard that there be no detriment, just that the benefits of the grant of the variance outweigh any detriment, and there's no substantial detrimental impact to the zone plan or to the public good. So given the configuration of the lot, I see no substantial detriment to the PB zone if the board were to move favorably on this application. As far as the public good, I see this as only an upgrade to the Plainfield Avenue corridor. I see us upgrading the curb appeal of the site with a modern facility with generous landscaping that complies in all respects to the GB criteria for this type of site. And I think that that's certainly important. As far as the Medici reconciliation and the continued omission of this use, perhaps the lion's share of the PB zone may be inappropriate for this type of use. But this particular site and this particular occasion, I think, is appropriate for it for the reasons stated. For that matter, too, when you look at the future land use plan, Edison last examined its master plan through a reexamination report in 2011 with... that was the last time the master plan was looked at. I believe you're actually undergoing a master plan right now. Is that correct?
The most recent reexamination was done in '21, and it recommended that we redo the master plan, basically.
'21, I'm sorry, not 2011, '21.
Yeah, and so we were within a 10-year limitation. But the town is in the process now of overhauling the entire master plan. So you are correct in that regard.
Okay, yeah. So when I looked in the future land use plan, there were a few statements in there that I thought were very compelling. Specifically, when you look in the future land use plan of the existing Edison master plan, there's a statement on page 22 of that land use plan, which reads, "With Edison's location at the crossroads of New Jersey and proximity to almost every major roadway in the area, there is a well-established network of highways within the surrounding municipality. This presents a unique opportunity for Edison to focus redevelopment efforts along major highway corridors where mass transit opportunities exist." So this, in my opinion, is certainly, as was testified to our prior witnesses with respect to the average daily traffic coming by the shoes, it's certainly a major transport corridor with proximity to mass transit. So the redevelopment and the repurposing of this site is absolutely consistent with the future land use plan. That future land use plan on the next page goes on to read, "Fighting sprawl and encouraging development and redevelopment of our urban and older suburban centers is among the state of New Jersey's top priorities." And certainly, this would be consistent with that, having these two sites redeveloped. In the reexamination report that was done, there are a number of goals, and one of those goals talk about balance competing interests of economic development and traffic congestion. I certainly have been to the community enough to know that traffic congestion is something that we consider here. But the master plan doesn't say limit development, restrict development. It just says balance the competing interests of economic development. And here we have the opportunity to put this use at a signalized intersection, which certainly, in my opinion, balances that. In addition to that, there are some other master plan goals in the reexamination report that talk about encouraging the continued development of existing and potential business corridors and centers, including but not limited to Amboy Avenue, the Edison Train Station, Route 27, and Oak Tree Road. So the master plan, of course, the train station is right across the street, so the master plan is encouraging the continued development of the existing and potential business corridors. This is, while not a permitted use, it certainly is an existing business corridor. I think that that would be an undisputable statement of fact. So with that being said, I think when you look at all of this and you put together the building blocks of this case, as I have from a planning point of view, and you reconcile those things, that the fact that the site is in the PB zone where it's not permitted, but perhaps a good opportunity to redevelop this site with a use that is really quite well-suited to the area, quite well-suited to the uses that are surrounding the subject property in proximity to mass transit, I think the board can certainly... when you look at some of those master plan goals that I sated, I think the board can certainly conclude that this applicant substantiates its burden of proof for the grant of the D1 variance required in conjunction with this application and actually takes the opportunity to implement many of those master plan goals that are in the master plan. We do also need some sign variance relief, as Mr. Young testified to last month and Mr. Kunsman testified to... or Mr. Young testified this evening and Mr. Kunsman testified to last month. We do need a variance for the height of the facade signs on the existing quick check. And that really is, as I think Mr. Young explains it probably better than I could, is that it really is architectural to place them lower. I mean, could it be done? Sure. But architecturally, they're going to look much better where they are now. The building is certainly lower than is required to be in the PB zone and has no issues with respect to violating the height. It's just simply that in order to work around the architectural features that we have on that building, we do need some height, some relief with respect to the height of those signs. The signs are conforming with respect to the area. We are also asking for a relief with respect to the size of our pylon sign. That is required to be 75 feet, and we're proposing 100. By law, we are required to post those prices of our gasoline, our daily pricing. We are required to post that. So in order to balance having the sign visible and meet our required guidelines, we provided 100 square foot of signage. I believe the board can grant those under the C2 flexible C criteria and that there would be no substantial detriment if those sign variances were granted. They will certainly lend themselves, the ones on the building architecturally, will increase the curb appeal so they can advance criteria I. And as far as the pylon sign, we'll advance criteria H of the land use law, which talks about promoting the free flow of traffic. So we can certainly have those variances granted under the C2 flexible C criteria, in my opinion. And I guess the last variance that I believe we are seeking is for the lighting level. And Mr. Kunsman did testify to that last evening, the last time we were here. So I believe there has been sufficient engineering testimony to substantiate why we need those lighting levels. And I think certainly with a 24-hour operation, we want to make sure that we have safe and efficient, safe lighting on a site. With Mr. ... I don't know that I... if you would just indulge me for a minute to go back through my notes here, I just want to make sure... this is the beauty part about having these things on Zoom. You can have these papers all taped up in your office and get them so quickly. So if you'll just indulge me here for a minute and make sure I hit all my points that I wanted to hit. I mean, this stupidest case, I can certainly talk about the stupidest case. And I certainly said, and I alluded to that when I said other cases that this board has heard and we can't... what the stupidest case held was that the board approved the Blueberry Village or stupidest case for the Wawa. And in that case, for the particular suitability, I was the planner on it, and I testified to the average daily traffic and how I felt that that made a lot of sense to put a use that thrives on average daily traffic on that site. And the court, Judge Hurley reversed the board, and then that decision was upheld. And what they held was that it can't be the location or the traffic. It has to be something particular about this site. And that's why I testified to the specific conditions of this site and at the signalized intersection, rendering the site particularly suitable for the proposed use. So I did say that I thought it was a distinction with a difference, and we're certainly not relying on the character of the area to substantiate our burden of proof with respect to particular suitability in this case, as we certainly learned our lesson from the last matter.
I'll go to the board. Any questions for Ms. Cafone? None? Mr. Comba?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Mr. Bignell brought it up in his report, and then you also highlighted the comparison to the GB and GBH zone. Do you know, and if not, we have Mr. Ayat, and I'm sure he knows, the proximity of the GB and GBH zone to the site?
I believe it's almost adjacent.
It is? Okay. Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Mr. Bignell, has all of your points in your letter been taken care of at this point?
I believe so, Madam Chair. I would just point out that the light levels is not a variance, it's a design waiver in our, as we've looked at in the past.
Okay.
And maybe a little more testimony why it has to be so bright. I understand it's like, you know, at nighttime and they want to be safe, but I don't want the sky glow, and I don't want that affecting anybody in the neighborhood, so it doesn't really need to be that bright.
Mr. Chang, can you have someone come up? I'll go one more time. Any more questions for Ms. Cafone? You're off the hook.
Say it again. I'm off the hook.
You're off the hook.
I'm not going far. If you think of anything, I'll be right here. Thank you.
And while we're waiting, Mr. Carley, I assume you're happy, happy, everything is okay?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just testified at the last meeting. The applicant is in receipt of our October 25 second review. They have addressed some of the comments there relative to stormwater management and site improvement, sanitary waste disposal. But what I recall from the last hearing is that the applicant has agreed to comply with any outstanding comments that the memory plan revisions or additional reporting. Is that correct?
I'm sorry. Could you repeat? I apologize.
That the last hearing, when testimony was put on about site civil, it was represented that you were in receipt of our October 25, 2022, a second review report and that you would comply with the outstanding comments that are contained within that.
Yeah, we will comply with that, and we did receive it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. ...
Madam Chair, if I could...
The lighting, please, yes.
Yeah, lighting. Mr. Lamont, I bring it back to the board.
Yep, Mr. Lamont, okay.
If I may, it's really a two-part answer, and I will take the part about operations. As you know, we talked about security. And I know when they look at the engineering and the math of the lighting over the site and they talk about average light levels, which I've never really been able to understand what an average light level is, they're always high because of our canopy area, but we just want it to be safe. So it's lit brighter than the rest of the site. And in most cases, we can say, and our engineer will elaborate, but in most cases, we can say, the whole site is designed like a typical parking lot would comply to the lighting requirements, and then all the numbers get thrown out of whack because we require the canopy to be so bright. But it's all about safety, just having attendants out there all night, having cash transactions occurring. Our concern from an operations perspective is really about safety. And then I will add, and now I'm getting out of my expertise, but the way we do it, it's all downlit with LED lights that are highly controllable, so we always comply around the perimeter with the exception of maybe where the driveways come out to the street. So all I want to, in conclusion, just say, for us, it's all about safety in the operation in that specific area of the canopy. And there's nowhere else on the site that is particularly bright, including the perimeter where we would typically comply.
Okay, and now...
Then if I could have Mr. Kunsman, he testified before the board last meeting. He'll talk about the lack of lighting spillover beyond the property line.
Yes, Mr. Bignell?
My concern with the spillover, because they'll show it at zero foot candles. I have two main concerns. One is the brightness, the sky glow that is generated when it reflects off the ground and the like. And I'd like to know what the foot candles are underneath the canopy, because the maximum we have is 3.6, which is kind of bright. But if it's close to that, I'm satisfied. I understand the safety issue. But what are you proposing at the canopy?
I'm just going to have him sworn in again.
Sure.
Raise your right hand if you solemnly swear or if you tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
Sorry.
There you go.
Yes.
State your full name, please.
Matthew Kunsman. My last name is spelled K-U-N-S-M-A-N.
All right, and this is just a continuation from your last testimony, so go right ahead, sir.
Sure. So to answer your question, the lighting levels underneath the canopy range from 30 foot candles approximately upwards to, I think, 30, 6.8.
Yeah, the most we allow is 3.6. So it's awful bright.
Boy, that is a very big difference.
Yeah, that's like lighting up the Yankee Stadium. We don't need to do that here. And we've had that problem in other places along the highway, and I've got neighborhoods complaining that the bright light at night affects them because they can see it. It's just, it's out there.
There... I'm sorry. Go ahead.
And so you got to tone it down. I mean, that's as simple as that.
Okay, and you said what?
3.6 is the maximum by ordinance. He's at 30.
3.6, yes, right. So that's really...
Okay, that's like lighting Yankee Stadium. I mean, we don't need to do that.
Correct.
And it's still safe, but I think you have to come to a more reasonable illumination, so to speak.
All right. So Mr. Lamont, are you the person that can make that determination this evening? Do you have to go back to someone and then be on our calendar again in order to...
No, this is not an unfamiliar topic for us, of course. I'm not sure if the 3.6 requirement is specifically for a gas station, but we have had many times have been confronted with this dilemma. And I will tell you that from our experience, we believe that 25-foot candles is the lowest we can possibly go at the gas canopy and that we don't believe puts out a glow through the neighborhood. It is the same type of cutoff lighting, and we can demonstrate that the spillage at the property line is zero. We don't have any lights that, when we talk about the dark sky requirements and glow and all, we don't have any lights on the entire property that shine upward. Our signs are internally illuminated... Our signs are internally illuminated. There's no illuminated panels on our canopy like some of our competitors do, other than just the white, the small white letters that say quick check. So we believe from a sky glow perspective, our designs hold up pretty well, and we don't have any excess decorative lighting or anything like that that shines upward either.
Okay. Mr. Bignell, he mentioned 25-foot candle, but you said 3.6. Are we talking about the same apples here, or are we talking about apples in our ranges?
Well, the maximum, the maximum foot candles not to exceed 3.6.
3.6. Okay.
We're at the ordinance to be unsafe.
Okay.
And to compare it with 30 or 25-foot candles is just too much.
Okay.
And I'm not going to change my mind, and he can say anything he likes, because that's his position, and I understand that. But I don't think the board should grant that waiver. Not at that level.
Correct. Mr. Lamont?
Would it be possible to take this topic up as a condition of our approval, that we maybe look at what other gas stations in the area are doing?
No. No, we won't approve. We have to come to an agreement now, or you have to come back and bring us more proof, one way or the other, and we can have you another evening. But we're not going to make this, if we so approve, we're not going to make that a condition of approval.
Well, I'm concerned about the 3.7 being very low. I think even when we've talked about...
And I'm not saying be a 3.7. I understand the need for your safety and...
Right. But not 25 either.
But, you know, we're not even splitting the difference. You know, if you get somewhere around 12-foot candle, I might, okay. But I've lived this already with other applications, and I want to be on the record.
Yeah, I agree.
So when there's a problem.
Do you, Mr. Chang, do you want five minutes?
Yeah.
Or, right, why don't we give five minutes? But I'll put it out this way. If you feel that you want to give on additional testimony, I mean, we can put you off until next year now that we have dates.
No, if we have a couple minutes, if...
Five-minute recess.
Okay, fine. We're going to take five-minute recess. Thank you.
Thank you.